Especially here at Meridian Public Schools. We thank especially the people that have been to all of the interviews for a long time. So, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda.
I move the adoption of consent agenda as president.
Support.
Motion support.
Aye.
All right, we're moving on to new business. We're tonight, we're going to be interviewing our two final candidates for the job of superintendent of public schools. Meridian. And our first candidate will be Sarah Glan. And she will come in and give us a ten minute presentation on her ninety day plan. And then after that, we will ask questions. Anybody else? Good? Uh, we also, we will make public comment, but it will be after the second presentation in public. And go ahead and speak.
Hello. Are you going to do something? No, not anyone doing anything right.
No, go ahead.
I have a new, um, I need a plan. Okay. Alright, so I put together an idea plan. Um, I kind of feel like I've already done some of this over the last six months, but I'm just gonna dig a little deeper into the things that I think are important, um, moving forward. Next is my leadership philosophy. I gotta get used to two screens. I'm not used to this. I have a paper also. Um, this is just five things that I came up with when I was in my master's program to talk about the things that I think are important leadership. First is integrity. If you don't have integrity, you have nothing. Um, so just do what you say and say which, you know, follow what you're gonna say and you do. And, um, that always popular. And as all of you know, the decisions I make day to day are not popular. Second, um, to be popular with some of you, be a warrior. Stand up for what you believe in. Um, don't be afraid to fail because you learn from failure. Um, competency. Be well worth in areas that you are and look for areas of growth all the time. Continuously go until you reach the master level. Collaboration, that's important. In this district, you do project based learning. It's all about collaboration. Um, we have a really diverse team, leadership team, teachers. We rely on each other to make us a better place. And then creativity. I think this district is founded on creativity. We're always looking for new things to do, be innovative, think outside the box. Um, and follow that path. This is just the current, um, strategic plan, vision and mission of the district. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it because they haven't updated since twenty sixteen. So I definitely think it's at the top of the to do list, um, when we get to that point. So core beliefs. All students can learn. If teachers and staff do not do this, your students are never gonna rise to a level that we want them to be. We can't have bias in the classroom. Um, develop and support the whole child. Social emotional supports, instructional supports, after school, before school, um, professional development for a teacher to be able to support the whole child. Um, that leads into student centered learning practices. That's what we do every day with project based learning, nature S. Post-secondary education, that's Delta, Bayernac. And we just keep looking for countywide CTE, all the things that we already do. So, I put three buckets up here today, um, and I'll lead through these always with listening, learning and leading. If you don't listen, you're not gonna learn. You have to be a good listener. I've learned that over the last ten years from some of the folks I've worked with. When I started, I was really quick when I began this and I'm not like that anymore. I really analyze situations, think about impact across the district. And, um, make the decision from there. So board relationships, um, ensure effective district governance through positive board superintendent relations. I'll talk about instructional, non-instructional operations. I don't mean to read everything for you. And then communication. I think I always say, uh, communication is the key to success. Cause a lot of people get frustrated when there's a lack of communication. The next thing, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it because I think we've already started some of these processes, is board relationship. Um, and when I up there, you'll see on the first one, the system of accountability. I don't mean you all being accountable. I mean me being accountable. And that's through the evaluation process of the superintendent. What goals have you set for the superintendent? How are you gonna hold them accountable? How are you gonna monitor that? Um, I think that we still need to have some more one-on-one meetings. And have those more regularly, like I said before, about a couple times a year, a couple of months, whatever the frequency we figure out is the best. Um, and then just about the rapport of honest and direct communication. If any of you know me at all, I am definitely not offended by direct communication. Um, sometimes I maybe, um, offend others because I'm too direct, so I've been looking at practicing that a little bit better. Um, but I'm always honest. And then the next one, I must spend quite a bit of time on this. Um, mainly on the instructional, not the non-instructional. Um, non-instructional, food service, transportation, facilities, worked very closely with these groups over the last few years. Um, and I have a pretty good understanding of them. Um, I've been at the table for many instructional conversations. My resume does not reflect that. But I've been a thought partner in every decision that's been made in this district for ten years. And I really appreciate that the administration team answers what I would call my stupid questions from time to time. Um, and sometimes they say, well, I need to ask you a stupid question, even though they're not stupid because there are no stupid questions. Um, so we have an exceptional team that comes together to create robust learning, um, opportunities for our kids. So the next slide is gonna focus on the instructional model we currently have at Meridian. And I just did, just, just the admin, the leadership team, we kind of had with the support below it. So here, we use a team-based instructional model to analyze quantitative and qualitative data to assess, um, student outcomes to keep improving. I'm not gonna read all of it, but we have, um, elementary principal, Stacy Douglas is the assistant. Um, we have instructional coaches, we have, um, Katie Mauer. And then we have our teachers and interventionists down here. The junior high has the same structure, but you'll notice there's no instructional coach right now. And that's something that I think needs to be changed for next year, so we've already, we're almost, we almost have somebody hired for that position for next year. Um, the high school, I did not put the dean in here because I don't necessarily consider him instructional. He is, but I did, there's no assistant there. So what I'm saying is, if you look at all of these groups, the MTSs coordinator is helping with special education right now. We all come together to facilitate the instructional model, the social emotional model, all of the things that we put into what the kids get every day in their education. From a top up, bottom down, everybody together at the table when we're meeting. We all do that to support learning at Meridian. Um, so the next one, I'm going to talk about the continuous improvement plan for learning. And I'm gonna hand you this and then we'll talk about it in a minute. What I'm handing you is the third and fourth grade MSEP results from the last five years, which is really only four years worth of data. And I pulled this off of MeMetrix, which we've had for a long time. But my predecessors did not ever utilize to monitor instruction. And I have been digging into it more to try and figure out exactly how it works and how I can look at data to help us improve when we have conversations in our weekly meetings. So, the first three goals are identify goals, align goals with benchmark per state standards. So that's your top, that's like step one. Then you're gonna identify, oh, let me back up. This is how I would do it from a superintendent's view. Okay, so, the building is, and their, their teams are gonna identify goals. They're gonna identify the objectives because they're the experts in this area. The teachers know what they're supposed to be teaching. They look up the benchmarks and MDE. Um, and then specify approaches, measures, and so the next four, four through six. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about with building principals, well, what assessments are we gonna use? NWA, um, MSEP, we're gonna use all these measurements, summative and formative assessments. The formative assessment helps form the instruction you're gonna teach and the summative, the summary of the year. So, formative is NWA, um, short quizzes, tasks that they have in school. Um, and I'm gonna run out of time, so I'm gonna move on. But then, the big part that I really wanna focus on if I'm named superintendent is the telling of our story through data. And then we share the results with all of you and the teams, and then make adjustments. So last is, um, oh, let me just talk about the MSEP data. So if you look at that sheet that I gave you, it shows that in the last five years, that third and fourth grade have grown thirteen and a half percent in math. Um, the state average, if I take third and fourth grade state average, is thirty-nine point one percent. So we are above the state average. And on that diagram, it shows you economically disadvantaged, disadvantaged in all students. So while we're not there, we're not a hundred percent, we are getting closer. And then communication, whoops, let me go back. Um, so just like I talked about last week, um, conducting listening and learning sessions, having some, um, conversations in advisory groups with parents and families. Um, develop perspectives, um, and then also the big one to think about is legislative communication. Um, I've already been at the table with legislators. I'm very good at giving the, um, advising them on how the funding will affect or how them changing a law that affects collective bargaining will affect the district. And lastly, did I go the right way? Sorry. Um, this is my commitment. I'm vested in this district. I have a child that still goes here. So, I'm just gonna read this statement, and that's a picture of me from here, I think, in a question. Um, being an educational leader is complicated and challenging. It's more about, it is more than budgets or bottom lines, more about being a, about evaluations or meeting attendance. Being an educational leader is about helping to create powerful learning experiences in a culture of caring for staff and students. Being an educational leader is ensuring that each person feels connected to the schools in a positive way. Any questions?
So again, Mike, the format we're gonna use is that if you have particular questions that you'd like to ask Sarah about her presentation, we can do it at this time. And then after we finish that, we'll be going to the questions just as we talked about. We're gonna go, each board member will take an opportunity, different from what we've done before. Questions are not the same for the first and second interview. From the first to second, each candidate will be, develop questions based on what you feel has information that you need. We're using, I'll give you kind of a guide, um, as far as time, but, um, this is more about you making sure that you've got all your questions answered. And I'll try to help you along the way, but that's, that's really the process that we're gonna be using at this time. Thank you.
I think that the order, we've got your questions here, Dennis, Mike, Chris, and Steve. Might as well be followed orders. But before we do that, is there anything, Sarah, that you'd like to reflect on from the first interview after, after you leave?
I mean, I just would like to drive home with the board that I'm passionate about public ed. I'm passionate about this place. Um, I didn't have that passion, I would say, ten years ago. I knew I wanted to work in public ed, but I really have a passion and I have the drive to succeed that I think benefits here. I know I've never been a teacher, um, but I teach people in the district all the time, different things. I've coached equestrian team. I've taught kids to ride for a horse for, since I was ten years old, which is a long time ago. Um, you know, I have the capacity to learn. And the superintendent's role in instruction is, is a facilitator and a systems and structures person. And having an accounting degree, that's exactly how my brain works. Um, and as most of you know, I have no trouble holding people accountable if they need to. So that has been my job for a very long time. Um, and I really think that a team, if we're using the team-based approach to instruction, you have to have a diverse team. We cannot be the same. Because if we're all the same, it's gonna be all the same instruction and we have to look at things differently. Um, you know, how one student learns is different than another and we have to have people that have good ideas. And if we're similar, I feel like the quality around here may decline.
So first up is Dennis.
How do you create a climate that supports risk and helps others feel safe in the classroom, district and community leadership?
I think that is done with, um, being honest. Like I said, even when it's unpopular. And then following what you said you would do. That's the basis of everything. If you wanna inject change in a district or any, any organization, trust is the precipice of all of this. Collaboration. What was the rest of the question, Dennis?
How do you create a climate that supports risk and helps others feel safe in the classroom, district and community?
So from the risk part, I think it is, don't be afraid of failure. You know, I mean, we, um, at elementary this year, we implemented a new curriculum. And they're analyzing through it and they realized that there was a part in the curriculum that they didn't see before. I don't remember what part it was. But they're now enriching that piece of the curriculum that they know is not reaching said benchmark. So that then students can get to that, that benchmark of vocabulary, whatever they're, whatever they're missing. Um, I don't think you punish people for taking risks and thinking outside the box. Um, we've done that here for a long time.
What would a typical administrative staff meeting look like?
A typical one?
Yep.
Um, depends on which group you're looking at. So three times a month, I meet with just the building leaders. And that depends on the, the time of the year.
Well, as your role as superintendent.
Sure. So, three times a month, I, every week I meet with building principals. Once a month, we meet with the whole collective admin team, um, every group. It's food service, transportation, facilities, that's once a month. And we talk about, everybody kind of shares out what they're doing right now in that role. And then every, uh, week on Wednesday, right now is the time, at nine AM, we meet as a team. Sometimes we do walkthroughs in the buildings and go into classrooms and observe, um, teaching and learning. Um, other times, we, um, lately, we were talking a lot about staffing and planning for next year. Um, and again, I've been at the table for these for ten years. It's not something new to me. I'm just facilitating meetings now. Um, and just trying to figure out, you know, here you gotta think about how all the, the teachers fit into certain spaces because we don't wanna be overstaffed and we share teachers within buildings. Um, so I share with them legislative updates if needed, um, any countywide information that I got at superintendent meetings. Um, any new funding that's coming out and how we might be able to spend it. Um, they might give me feedback on how things are going in their building. Um, we talk data. Cause it's not just achievement data. You're looking at attendance, office referrals, um, social emotional referrals, all kinds of data.
What would be the main thing that you would need to learn if you became superintendent?
I think the main, my main focus would be, um, kind of, I would dig into the, the historical achievement of, um, I mean, the main data that would be MSEP and SAT and TSAT. And see what historically the trend looks like. Um, and then after I kind of gathered all of that information, um, I would go back in and then have conversations with the principals to see, um, if I understand and remember all of the things that we've implemented, like, you know, this year we just implemented a math and stuff, um, intervention at the elementary. So I'm interested to see next, this fall, or we'll get MSEP data back, you know, it's nine months after you take it, not necessarily, but it's quite a while actually you take it that you get it back. So you can't get it right then. That's why we use the formative assessments of NWA and Acadiants to get that quicker data. Plus teachers know if their students are doing well or not. I mean, they have the daily test, you know, they have assignments that they grade. But I would dig into all those things and then, um, as a group, we would come together and, and talk about it and plan out what might be the best plan of action. Um, but I mean, I, I'm honest, I'm, instruction, that is where I need to dig into. I have all of the other bases covered. So that would be the thing that I would really need to focus on. I mean, Scott's leading a new TACTS one oh one PD this summer. I should probably go sit in on it. Um, and I have no problem asking questions and admitting when I don't know something.
Can you give us some, uh, some of your experience in dealing with disgruntled, dis-satisfied parents who are concerned about their own children rather than the entire student body?
I would say I'm expert level on that after I got tasked with COVID. Um, but, you know, sometimes you just have to listen to them. So number one, I would listen, let them get it out, listen to them and see where they're coming from. Um, they may not fully understand the whole situation. Um, parents much like myself always believe that their child is right or that their child is, is a, whatever it might be, you know, you always hope the best of your child. Um, but I would gather facts from them. If it was, say, they were upset with a principal, I would say, well, have you talked to said principal yet? No, I would defer them back to them and say, have you talked to them? Same thing if it, they came to a principal and had to talk to the teacher. Um, and then I would just work with them to try and come to some kind of a compromise that, um, that works for everyone. Um, I'm trying to think of one that happened this year. I can, I can hear this gentleman's voice in my head, but I can't think of the exact situation. But he was really upset about how his daughter was treated at school about something. And I just talked him through it and, and it was about, um, I don't remember what it was about. I probably shouldn't say it in a public meeting. Um, but I just talked him through it. And sometimes if you just let them talk long enough, they're talked out and they're, they're over whatever it was. So, I just think giving them that, that platform to feel like they can talk to you and bring issues to you is important. And then maybe giving them some recommendations as to what might be a solution to the problem. I know that's a really vague answer, but I can only say so many things that are without being. Like when I had a COVID, I would just say, I understand. I, I don't necessarily agree with what's happening either. I, that, that's just, and that makes them, you empathize, you use empathy.
Understanding as leaders, we perform collaboratively and acknowledge that we cannot be successful without our teams. I'd like your response to the following question to be uncharacteristically I-centered. Please share an innovative practice you've introduced in your recent past. The practice and the outcome with special focus on student outcomes. I-centered, it's gonna be hard. I know you're very much a team person.
I-centered, but focused on student outcomes. So something I did. Okay. Well, a long time ago, um, when Sue Vando was the president, I remember sitting in a meeting with her and the prior superintendent. And we were talking about, uh, vertical alignment. And, um, I didn't know what they were called at the time. It was probably my third year here. I grew, you know, I mean, I was just finally getting my bearings, right? And I said in the meeting, well, what if we, what if we develop these teams of teachers? Because they know what they're supposed to be teaching. So at elementary, it's grade level. At the secondary level, it's subject level. And we let the teachers lead what the instruction should look like because they're the experts. We're trying to produce said student and they're not widgets. You know, it's not an assembly line. It's like this sometimes. And so out of that formed the PLC facilitators that we have today. And I made that statement at the table. I introduced that concept. I didn't know until we went to the, the CVA training a few weeks ago, two ninety-eight, that, see, PLC is about around for twenty some years. I just thought, if you put the power, the knowledge, if you use the people that have the knowledge to transform the learning, to make it better, if you give them some ownership over it, guess what's gonna happen? And then on top of it, at that time, we didn't have instructional coaches. So, and we couldn't really afford them at that time. So we didn't have the level of support, because the instructional coaches go in and coach the teachers on their tier one practices, which is your best thing for your buck, I would say, and to get, to drive student achievement. So the PLCs really took some of that weight off the principals in order for them to be able to, um, have thought partners and have more conversations about how things should go as far as looking at curriculum, improving instruction. Um, just anything, all their practices. And project based learning is a heavy lift, so I think those PLCs really helped at the secondary level from trying to form, uh, projects and curriculum and make sure they're scaffolding. It's called scaffolding, like they have the driving question and then they have lessons that they do in between the scaffolding. So I think those PLCs really help to add value to the, to the product that we're giving students for an education.
Thank you. Describe the most challenging labor negotiation you've conducted. What was challenging about it? What of your negotiation techniques was most effective and what were the results?
I would say the most challenging ones, um, I mean, the year that we took all the prohibited subjects out of the MEA contract was challenging. Um, but I think as of late, the most challenging ones, um, were with the support staff. Um, you know, a few years ago, we outsourced transportation. That was painful. Um, but I think at the end of the day, the, the drivers are a little bit happier now. I think, I don't think it's as painful as we thought it was gonna be. I think it was actually better for the, for the staff. Um, but the truth is, we don't have really contentious ones, but we do have times where there's, we're stuck on certain things. Um, so in the MASP contract, you can tell when you look at it, that for a long time, that maintenance and custodial were at the table and the parent professionals were not. So last year, or two years ago, um, when we sat down, I think it was last summer, cause it was before March first and last. We were trying to figure out how to get the pairs up to where they're more, um, competitive in the county. And so it was just, but I couldn't move, I needed to leave the others pretty close to where they were because they were competitive in the county. So that was probably five months of bargaining that, trying to figure out what it would look like without, um, breaking the bank to give them too much. Um, and it just takes a lot of conversation. And I think over the years, when I get to where I can't give anymore, I just look them and the UNICEF director in the eye and say, this is my final offer. And, and I've built that relationship so they know when I say that, that's it. I'm really not, I'm not going any further. The other thing I do is always give them a spreadsheet. We, I cost out every single, like every time I do a, uh, I cost out what they give me when they pass and I cost out what I give them when they pass. And obviously you can have a recessive, um, regressive bargain. But I think putting, I mean, it's like, it's like student achievement. Put the numbers on paper. The numbers aren't gonna lie. The numbers are gonna tell the story of what you're offering them. So, again, I keep, I know I keep going back to this, but I just, I, I'm a pretty straight shooter, so I, I just, the numbers are there. They're not gonna, any different. So I think that I've just built that confidence over the years. Um, and if I hadn't, I would just keep having conversations about why they had misinformation that they didn't have if they thought we had some hidden fund balance we were sitting on or something like that. So, um, that's just how I built that over the years. I don't know if that answers your questions more or not.
What are some of the current trends and issues in education that, in your interests or concerns?
Um, well, I mean, I probably at first would go back to the funding. Um, I like that Governor Whitmer has given us more funding every year, but we're still below where we should be. And they're still giving around four hundred and some dollars a pupil to, um, higher ed. And so I think that's a concern that I have. And I feel like we're always on the chopping block where you can't stand out five years of what you wanna do with staff because it's so volatile. And I'm just waiting for the body to fall out because that's how we've been trained of, oh, whoo, you got four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Um, but we're gonna increase ORS three percent and so by the time you give steps and all of that, you're, you're back down. Um, Um, but we're gonna increase ORS three percent, and so by the time you give steps and all of that, you're, you're back down, um... I don't know if there's anything other, the other thing in, in public ed right now that's really volatile is in Lansing. I mean, there's a public bill, um, I wrote it down, but there's a bill right now, and I haven't shared with the board yet, but there's a bill to repeal basically all of the collective bargaining. Um, I would say that we got back in eleven, um, that came out, I think it didn't come out of our contracts till like thirteen. So, um, teacher placement, um, evaluation. A lot, just, and I'm not saying they couldn't be bargained back in in a way, but, um, before that, you had to, you would lay off based on seniority and bring back based on seniority. And right now, we can, um, lay off, we can, we do it based on evaluation. And if we lose those rights, what might happen is, we would not be able to have the ability to always make sure that the best teachers are in front of the kids. Um, I know that's not popular for me to sit here and say in front of the teachers' union that's sitting in the audience, but that's just the reality of some of the things that we could lose if this bill passes. And so those are the things that, um, I just think we need to be aware of and understand, and have a plan if they go through, obviously, and sit down with the union and figure out how to bring these things back in, because when we took them all away, they agreed to all of that, so that we could settle the contract. Um, so, I just think from a legislative perspective, that's, I, I met with legislators this year, I sat at the table with them, we've talked about things. Um, but other than that, I don't, well, the other thing I don't necessarily always agree with is the, the MSEP testing and some of the testing that we do. I think the state really needs to look at it and see if it really fits what we're teaching now. I think it's maybe a little bit outdated, but I haven't dug into that to see more. I mean, you and I all know that by seventh grade, those kids don't really care about taking the MSEP. Probably the SAT, but third and fourth graders, and I think there's a lot more to a student than a test score. So, um, I think MDE has some work to do on what the MSEP contains.